Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the October Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJ SA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 8, 2022. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believe that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district home page. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise to the platform, the allegiance. Can we take the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatori.
Here.
Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre.
Here.
Ms. Connor. Mr. Clubful.
Here.
Ms. McGurk. Ms. Simons. Ms. Takarian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a quarrel.
Okay. Well, we are thrilled to have our students and staff back this evening as we resume our monthly recognitions. And with that being said, I will turn the meeting over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, and of course, the students and their special guests, their families. We are closing out Hispanic Heritage Month and ushering in Italian Heritage Month, so bienvenidos and benvenuto. It is always my honor to stand before you and introduce our talented principals as they take to the podium to celebrate and share detailed information and anecdotes about the students being honored here tonight. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of five students as they are honored as a Students of the Month for the month of September. They returned from summer break focused and determined to excel, and well, here they are. Everyone in this room and those who will watch from home are so very proud of you. As has been our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brant School Principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection at the podium and then memorialize this moment with a picture. He will then introduce the Connors Vice Principal, Mr. Hamlin. And he will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principals Shannon, Sorfin, and Pica Pietra of Wallace, Hoboken Middle, and Hoboken High Schools. Thank you for being with us here tonight and for your attention. And with that, I would invite Principal Bartlett up to the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, and good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to ask Lamani Tarrawali to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Lamani Tarrawali, our Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for September 2022. Lamani was nominated by her first-grade homeroom teacher, Mrs. Prignito, and her first-grade science teacher, Ms. Ramos. Mrs. Prignito said, "Lamani comes to school every day with a smile on her face. She is kind to others around her and is always willing to lend a helping hand. She tries her best on any given assignment and loves learning new things." Ms. Ramos said, "Lamani is always ready to learn. She is responsible and helpful to her classmates. Not only does she remain on task, she makes sure her group partners do as well. She always participates and spreads her positive energy to all her friends." I most certainly echo the sentiments of Mrs. Prignito and Ms. Ramos. One thing I can always count on is a big smile from Lamani whenever I see her. As I visit her class from time to time, she is always engaged in her work and able to tell me what she is learning about during a lesson. So far, her favorite thing to do this year is write in her journal during language arts time. Lamani exceeds expectations on any given task. At Brant, we teach and espouse kindness all day, every day, and Lamani's kindness towards others is an embodiment of the words of our daily kindness pledge. This isn't something that started for her this year in first grade either. Last year, as a kindergarten student, Lamani received one of our kindness awards from her teacher, Ms. Spadoro, for being, quote, "the kindest kid around." Exuding kindness and focusing on academics makes Lamani an asset to our school and our community as a great role model for others. When not in school, Lamani enjoys cleaning her room. And Lamani, I'm a father of two children, I just want to say, I want to shake your hand, I want to say, that's fantastic, that's fantastic. And she enjoys watching football. Saquon Barkley on the New York Giants is her favorite football player. Her favorite subject is math, and when she grows up, she wants to be a doctor. I'm going to be the first one to say it right now, Dr. Lamani Tarrawali has a great sound to it. Keep working hard, and there is no doubt that that will happen. When told she would receive this honor, Lamani said, "I am happy, excited, and amazed to be the Brant Student of the Month." We, in turn, are happy and excited for you too, Lamani, and we will keep being amazed at what you accomplish. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for our Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for September 2022, Lamani Tarrawali. At this time, I'd like to call up to the podium the Connor School Vice Principal, Mr. Jack Hamlin.
First off, congratulations to Evan Jervis, the Connor School Student of the Month for September 2022. We at Connors could not be more proud of Evan. Evan's a fifth-grade student in Ms. Ortiz's homeroom. Evan earned Student of the Month for September due to his incredible growth in academics, effort, and behavior. Evan had just transferred to Connors last school year, and as Evan can attest to, his transition to Connors was a little bumpy. However, Evan has put in tremendous effort and has transformed into a model student. Ms. Ortiz explains, "Evan answers and asks questions. He's always on task. When he's having a difficult time, he's always willing to receive feedback and help. Evan has a positive attitude and is kind and respectful to his peers as well as all of our Connors faculty. He absolutely loves helping his teachers and is always responsible with the task given to him. His teachers, as well as Ms. Wolfsey, Mr. Hanberry, and Ms. Lason, all shared the same praise for Evan. Everyone around Connors is so truly impressed with Evan's unbelievable turnaround and growth since he's become a Connors koala. And since being at Connors, Evan has made wonderful friends. In addition to playing with the Connors recreational basketball team, he's made lots of friends in his classes. Leona shared that Evan is a good friend because he always makes her laugh. Grace shared that Evan's a good friend because he's nice and funny. Principal Addy asked Evan what he thought when he found out he was awarded Student of the Month, and he said that he was surprised and happy. She asked him what he was most proud of, and he said that he was proud that he completes all of his assignments and that he really liked school this year. His favorite subject is math because he loves to solve problems. He also loves phys ed with Mr. Favino. His favorite sport is soccer, but he also loves playing Gaga at gym. When he grows up, he wants to be a soccer player. Outside of school, besides playing soccer, Evan loves to play video games and enjoys helping out at home, and especially likes helping with his little sister Stella. Evan's dad is so proud of how he handled school this year in terms of completing all of his assignments, helping other students, and being a model student. At home, Evan has been doing all of his homework each night, and his dad shared that Evan is the head coach of his little sister's soccer team. He runs the training sessions for 18, 6, and 7-year-olds. He keeps their attention and coaches their games. He's also active outside of school in soccer, basketball, and football. Evan's dad is so proud of Evan's tremendous growth and knows that Evan can accomplish anything that he wants to. Evan's mom adds, "I'm beyond proud of you for what you've accomplished in such a short amount of time. This title of Student of the Month is so well-deserved, and I look forward to you continuing to show off your academic skills as well as the kindness that has always been in you. You're a smart, sweet young man that can take on the world. I admire your confidence and know that you will continue to represent Connor's School as the ideal student you have become. I am proud to be your mother and look forward to you flourishing in life." Congratulations, Hollywood. Finally, Principal Addy shared that Evan is truly remarkable. Evan is the perfect example of how small steps forward can lead to incredible things. A little progress each day can add up to big results. Michael Jordan said that obstacles don't have to stop you. If you run into a wall, don't turn around and give up. Figure out how to climb it, go through it, or work around it. Evan, this is what you do on the soccer field, and it's what makes you great. It's also what you're learning to do at school. You're continuing to press forward and make excellent plays in the classroom. This is why you're not only the fifth-grade student of the month, but you're representing the entire Connors community today. You have all of the qualities of a Connors koala, and we're all so incredibly proud of you. So please join me in congratulating Evan Jervis, the Connor Student of the Month. Sorry, my first time. I'd like to introduce the Principal of Wallace School, Martin Shannon.
Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to celebrate Michaela Koven, our Wallace Student of the Month for September 2022. Michaela is a fifth-grade student in Mr. Stanek's class. Although it is only October, we can share with confidence that Michaela is a wonderful role model. Her peers always see her engaged and working extremely hard. During class, Michaela enjoys participating, answering questions, and is consistently working on ways to improve herself. For example, Michaela challenges herself academically by going above and beyond when it comes to homework and assignments. In fact, Michaela shared with me a mantra that captures these actions as well as her commitment to learning. If something is difficult, try even harder and don't give up. In class, Michaela interacts with her peers with politeness and kindness and always shows her teachers the utmost respect. Every day, she brings a positive attitude to class. When Michaela sees a fellow classmate who is struggling or in need of assistance, she is the first one to go over and help. Choosing a Student of the Month is a celebration of character, and Michaela is a great example of this. As her principal, I appreciate how dedicated she is to her well-being of her classmates. She cares just as deeply about the work that she does in class, and it shows. Michaela is truly the embodiment of a Wallace Wildcat. Michaela's favorite subject is math. When she grows up, she wants to have her own business. She would like to attend an Ivy League school or go to a university in Florida. Her favorite hobbies consist of dance and gymnastics. Her favorite sports are football and basketball. She is a huge Baltimore Ravens fan. Her favorite music to listen to is Taylor Swift. And an interesting fact about Michaela is that she once went swimming with sharks. Mrs. Ferrara, Michaela's third-grade teacher, had this to say. Michaela is someone who never gives up. She works hard, asks for help when needed, and is receptive to constructive criticism to help her improve in all aspects of her life, not just academically. Mr. Fagan, Michaela's fourth-grade teacher, continued her praise by saying, "Michaela is a kind, intelligent, competitive child with a bright future ahead of her. She has a great sense of humor and always has a smile on her face." And finally, Mr. Stanek, Michaela's current teacher, added, "Michaela has been a true pleasure to teach this year, and I am so proud to have her as a student." When I asked her how it feels to be the Student of the Month, Michaela coolly responded, "I'm excited, it's a lot of fun, and it makes me happy." Well, Michaela, thank you for representing all of our Wildcats. We are all so very proud of you. Let's hear it for Michaela, our Wallace School Student of the Month. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Sorfin, the Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Good evening, everyone. It is with great tiger pride to recognize Anthony Ead, the Hoboken Middle School overall Student of the Month for September. Anthony is not able to be with us this evening, but he and his family shared how unbelievably proud they are of this recognition. Since the first day of school, our staff has been stressing the importance of positive and meaningful connections in our school community. We believe that this is the main ingredient in our recipe for success, and I have observed Anthony exemplify this character trait daily with his peers, teacher, and most of all, himself. Ms. Burke, Anthony's teacher, shared, "He is always following directions, trying his best, and completing his work to the best of his ability. He has been a friend and has shown kindness in our classroom to new students, helping them with work and cleaning up after themselves. He has grown in his verbal communication skills and works hard to express himself and grow every day in school. Anthony is a role model and leader in our classroom. He is always doing the right thing, following directions and waiting for opportunities to share. Anthony always raises his hand to volunteer his answers, reads in front of the whole class, and comes up to the Board and shares his own thoughts. Being a leader does not mean you have to be the loudest or first up in line. He shows his leadership skills with positive character attributes. Anthony loves to do STEM projects, math, draw, and build blocks. When he grows up, he wants to fix things and build things. Ms. Burke can see why as he plays with his STEM light games in the back of the classroom during his breaks. He loves to read about history and historical figures. Anthony always wants to know more about Walt Disney and Abraham Lincoln. One article or day's worth of information isn't enough. He comes back asking deeper, more thoughtful questions. The students in Ms. Burke's class always thank him for helping turn cleanup. He reminds them to grab their things for lunch and recess and reminds them of the expectation in the kindness of ways. He is responsible, a great friend, and a student to be watched. Ms. Wolfsey shared that Anthony has had a great start to the school year. It is a pleasure to see him interacting with his peers during lunchtime as well as during class. He has made new friends in the classroom this year as well. Anthony enjoys playing on the playground as well as playing computer games in his free time. He is diligent student and also should be commended for his excellent attendance. Congratulations, Anthony, on being nominated for Student of the Month. When we asked Anthony about his achievement, he shared that he would love to take a ride in the elevator after receiving this award. He is very interested to see how it works. I told him, "It's very slow working, but it does work." Mr. and Mrs. Ead commented, "We are so proud of Anthony, and we are not surprised by how great he is doing in school. Anthony is a sweet, kind, and gentle boy. He is my joy and my reason to keep going. We are especially proud that in school he is respectful, kind, and works so hard. Ninety percent of his accomplishments have lots to do with his teachers and his aide, Mrs. G. The Ead family would like to thank everyone in the middle school who has the compassion and understanding to work with students daily and is very excited for his future. Congratulations to Anthony Ead for being an outstanding student and great role model here at HMS. Thank you." At this time, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Pica Pietra, the Principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call up Senior Olivia Lerna, our September Student of the Month. Olivia is a senior at Hoboken High School, and I must say that over the past four years, Olivia has continued to demonstrate her abilities as well as her maturity. A few weeks ago, I ran into Olivia in the hallway, and we struck up a conversation. I had asked how the start of her school was going, and she said, "Good," but she was really stressed. I asked why, and she said she was busy with her work as well as college applications, and then add a job on top of that. I told her to take deep breaths. We had a couple of four-day weeks ahead of us, and she should take advantage of the time to organize herself and prioritize her work. I said, "Write a list." And to no surprise, she showed me her list, and she had already done one. I've checked in a few times with her, and she is getting it all done. Olivia is taking on a tough schedule. AP Government, AP Macroeconomics, Spanish III Advanced, and Precalculus. And the AP Macroeconomics is the Johns Hopkins, and it's all online, and it's not an easy undertaking. It's much easier to have a teacher, but she wanted to challenge herself. She thought about it a little over the summer, and she came back and said, "I'm going to do it." She has a 3.5 GPA but continues to push herself with a keen insight on what she wants to achieve, and she is setting the bar very high for herself. Of course, her teachers were eager to share their words, which were hard-working, good-time-management, embraces diversity, eager to learn new things, engages with her peers, laser-like focus. I think you all get the picture. But two teachers shared two great pieces that a GPA does not always capture. Ms. Bavacwa said, "Olivia is currently in a small PE class with only three other senior students. The class is mixed in with students with special needs. Olivia has been a true mentor and a role model for the students in the class. She is patient and kind. She even helped the other students complete the movements for the fitness test. Actions that went above and beyond her role as a student in the class. Olivia is a wonderful part of Hoboken High School." Mrs. McGreevy shared that Olivia is a member of Hoboken High School's chapter of the National Honor Society. She is dedicated in her service to others, including making sandwiches for Hoboken Shelter, making ribbon pins for our Ribbons for Refugees program that benefited UNICEF in their humanitarian efforts in Ukraine, and many other activities. She is a very mature young woman, staying on top of her achievements, academics, work responsibilities, sports, and community service. We are very proud of Olivia. I asked Olivia a few questions. I asked when her best experience in Hoboken High School was, and she said she realized that my teachers actually cared about me and my future. I've never had connections with teachers, how I do at this school. They are also welcoming and accepting, and it's one of the things I love most about Hoboken High School. I asked her what drives her to be so fabulous. She said her parents, and reaching her goals, and attending her dream college, which is the University of Miami, which she has been working for a very long time and the reason she pushes herself so hard. After graduation, she is undecided but leans towards a business degree and real estate. She enjoys listening to music, going for walks, cooking, and spending time with her friends. She considers a lot of people her friends, but her inner circle is Gina, Ellie, Zoe, Harrison, Andrea, and Brianna. Her friends describe her as outgoing, talkative, friendly, and fun. She loves athletics, soccer, and bowling, being involved in clubs, and working at her job. I asked her where she sees herself in five years. She said, "Probably still in college." I'm assuming that's for a master's. And if not, a job that I plan to work hard to get. Have no doubt about that. Your successes will continue to follow you, Olivia. Continue to be as amazing as you are on your journey. We're very proud and congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our students recognized tonight. Keep up the great work, and we can't wait to see what you do in your futures. Next, I'd like to ask Naomi Cook to come up to the podium. She is the representative of the Hoboken High School Student Government.
Hello. My name is Naomi Cook. I am the Hoboken High School Student Government Board Representative. The Hoboken High School Student Government and Hoboken High School Student Government Activities Office had a productive and busy month. This past month, we have a successful morning announcements program, student government elections, class council meetings, and organizational meetings, Italian-American Heritage Month flag raising, and Fall Pep Rally. We would like to announce to you the winners of the Hoboken High School Student Government Elections. Over 40 wedrings were elected to leadership positions within the student government, but some notable elections are the class presidents and vice presidents. 10th-grade class council president was Tasha Foo, and the vice president was Arya Kahana. 10th-grade class council president, Arian King, and vice president Genevieve Fink. 11th-grade class council president was Alana Rivas, and vice president was Haley Benway. And 12th-grade class council president was Gina Cruz, and vice president was Autumn Kangley. The student government is busy planning committees, conducting breast cancer research fundraiser, and planning our November swearing-in ceremony. The student government has instituted Red Wings giveaway at every home football game once every half of a play. We have given away bracelets, stress footballs, t-shirts, mugs, and other Hoboken High School school squad. It seems to be very popular at football games. We hope to extend this to other sporting events as well. Red Wing Cares, Colation, Drama Club, and National Honor Society. The Drama Club, the National Honor Society, and volunteer-minded students are all on hand to assist the relocated Arts and Music Festival band performance at Hoboken High School on October 2. They worked concessions and assisted in the Hoboken Public Education Foundation table. GSA. The Gay-Straight Alliance mailed off the proceeds of our June dress down to the Trevor Project. We raised $400. The Trevor Project supports LGBTQIA+ youth in crisis. Hoboken High School Hispanic Culture Club. The Hoboken High School Hispanic Culture Club led their annual elections for officers on Friday, October 6, 2022, and there was a huge voter turnout. The following were the results of the election. The re-elected president, Maria Mastro Giovoni; re-elected vice president, Alexa Becero; and re-elected treasurer, Aiden Beddingcourt. There will be an election for secretary and public relations director on Wednesday, October 12, 2022. October 12th, 2022, after school. Thank you for all those who ran for office and all those who were involved in the democratic process. The Hoboken High School Student Government is sponsoring our second annual Field of Heroes. In honor of Veterans Day, we would like to invite you to participate in a special program to honor our heroes. In front of our beautiful John F. Kennedy Stadium will be decorated with American flags. Each flag will represent and honor members of our armed forces, past and present. Please consider honoring these great men and women by purchasing a flag for their service. Each flag costs $5 and will represent all honorees for their service. To honor a hero, fill out the form that is available on our social media and return it along with your donation in the form of a check made out to Hoboken High School Student Council. All forms must be completed and returned by Friday, October 28th, 2022. There will be a ceremony dedicating the field on Wednesday, November 22nd, November 9th, 2022. Time will be determined. Thank you so much for our support of our Hoboken Heroes. The Hoboken High School will be hosting our second annual spooky scavenger hunt, starting Monday, October 17th through the entire month of October. There will be several objects hidden throughout the Hoboken High School. Each object has a QR code. The first student to scan the QR code and return the item to Mr. Munoz will receive a prize. Once an object is found, another one will be replaced somewhere in the school. Students can check the student government's social media accounts for hints. I would also like to add that our annual Powderpuff Game is on Friday at 7:30 at JFK Stadium with the 2023 and 2024 classes. And finally, to round out this report, our monthly luncheon with Hoboken High School Administration will be held on Wednesday, October 19th at 12:00 PM. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak and we look forward to seeing you at our events. Go Red Wings! Girl soccer is undefeated, 11-0, third in the tournament, third round.
Thank you, Naomi, for a great update. We always enjoy seeing you. Next, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Naomi. Good evening. I have a few updates tonight. The first is that I'm very happy to report that in November, we will also be adding our middle school student government representative to do a monthly report as well. The month of October has been quite busy across the district. Our kindergarten through second grade readers are finishing up with their diagnostic reading assessments, and our students in grades three through 11 will be sitting for the Start Strong assessments in the coming weeks. On October 13th, there is a CPAC meeting at 8:30 in the morning on the Wallace Playground, and if the weather is not cooperative, the meeting will be brought inside. On the 13th, is, that's also the date for the Hispanic Culture Club. They will be hosting their Hall of Fame induction ceremony while simultaneously, our boys' soccer team will be celebrating their senior night. On October 14th, the middle school PTO will be hosting their fall festival while the girls' volleyball and soccer teams will be celebrating their senior nights. And on the same evening, the Hoboken Public Schools Theater Department will be running a family movie night fundraiser in the high school auditorium. On October 15th, the athletic department will be running a baseball and softball clinic for all boys and girls in town in grades four through 10. On October 20th, we will be having our Showcase of Excellence. That's an opportunity for all prospective Hoboken High School students, middle school students, students that are attending schools in and around Hoboken to take a look at Hoboken High School and see everything that they have to offer from academics, courses, to clubs and activities, as well as athletics. On Friday evening, October 21st, we will be having the dedication of the football stadium to our dear and sorely missed colleague and friend, Louis M. Tagliari Jr. On Sunday, October 23rd, we will be hosting a district-wide fall family dessert social, very similar to our kickoff that we had at the start of the school year, which was our ice cream social. This is just going to be a great way for families to spend some time together, talk, enjoy each other's company, play some cornhole, let the kids play on the field, and bring some blankets to watch a movie on a large screen. On Wednesday, October 26th, the HEA will be hosting a Halloween Spooktacular and trunk or treat. So we're very excited about that and we thank the HEA for that activity that's coming up. At the last board meeting, I highlighted a few programs, including our Guidance Department's College and Career Readiness Program, Friday Nights at the Nest, and the high school's Academic Support Center. This meeting, I'd like to briefly highlight two other programs. First, our new Bridge to Adventure Program. This is a program that connects fifth-grade students through twelfth-grade students from Hoboken to the outdoors through activities such as hiking, rock climbing, snowboarding, snowshoeing, skiing, surfing, and fishing. The whole premise behind the Bridge to Adventure Program is to have activities that expose students to nature and encourage teamwork and resilience. For these activities, we're working with Team Wilderness, Mountain Creek, Big Snow, Surf Time, Surf School, and the Hoboken Fishing Charter. The second program that I want to highlight is our Classroom Without Walls Program at Hoboken High School. Most of you know about that program. We've been running it since 2016, and from that date, students from Hoboken High School have traveled to England, Spain, France, Italy, Japan, Greece, and Peru. With an option to earn credits or simply soak in all that the trip has to offer, our students will be heading to the following destinations in the upcoming months and years. So this coming spring, the students will be heading to the Galapagos Islands. In the spring of 2024, they will be visiting Portugal, Spain, and France. In the spring of 2025, they will be on their way to Iceland. And in the spring of 2026, they will be visiting Ireland, Scotland, and England. So obviously, our students are getting some really great real-world experiences on these trips, and they incorporate everything from the history of the location to the culture and just the overall way of life in all of these different countries. On a more technical note, this evening, you'll see motions on the agenda for the approval of our district's CUSAC committee and also for our school's threat assessment teams. The CUSAC committee will review self-assessment scores in five areas: instruction and program, finance, operations, governance, and personnel. And our threat assessment teams, along with our Facilities Department and all of our security guards, will work closely with our SROs and our school safety specialists to ensure that our emergency and safety plans are in place and that everyone is trained in protocols that are associated with evacuations, shelter in place, and lockdowns. As a district, we recently submitted the annual paraprofessional plans to the county office, the annual gifted and talented report to the New Jersey Department of Ed, the required remote learning plan to the county office, and we've uploaded the NJ Smart Snapshot for the October 15th report. We are offering two groups of staff members CPR training in the upcoming weeks for all interested staff members. We will also be hosting CPR training for our threat assessment teams in the upcoming month as well. And we've recently arranged for flu shots and booster shots for all of our staff members. We're just awaiting the link from Medicine Man so that our staff members can actually have those shots if they so choose. And in closing, I'd like to congratulate our September Students of the Month and also Ms. Roseanne Versace for her award by Hudson County as the Italian-American Teacher and Educator of the Year. Congratulations, Roseanne.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and congratulations, Ms. Versace. Okay, so before we, I see some families, I was just going to say we can take a minute break and let the families leave to go home and do homework and get to bed, and then we will move on with the business portion of our meeting. Okay, we're, we're going to get started, start back up again, go into committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a committee report tonight? A business administrator's report, I'm sorry. Okay. So we'll start with curriculum, Ms. Delara.
Good evening. The curriculum committee met on Thursday, October 6th, at 1:00 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatori, Ms. Simons, and myself. The following was discussed and recommends all agenda items for approval. Ortho-Gillingham Training will be done by the end of the month for all K-2 and special education teachers and one grade representative per school for grades three, four, and five. Project Lead the Way Training for new teachers is ongoing. We also are having training to administer Fast Forward, which is underway. This is a technology-based platform for students predominantly with dyslexia and deemed a helpful tool. This is more commonly used in special education, however, we are expanding the reach in the general ed program for K-8. Some students in high school may also benefit from it in the Academic Support Center. There are a number of grant decisions that we are currently waiting on and some that are up for approval on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Khan.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met virtually on Thursday, October 6th. In attendance were Ms. Katamatori, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. McGurk, and myself. There are two agenda items for facilities this month, and we recommend both for board approval. 12.01 is a fire and safety drill for September, and 12.02 is a facilities use request from Hive Athletics. Hive is requesting use of JFK Stadium for seven Saturdays in January and February between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
Finance Committee met on Friday, October 7th. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Khan, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Angley, and myself. All agenda items were discussed and we recommend all for approval. A couple of things to note. One, the board would like to extend its appreciation to Stevens Institute of Technology for its donation of two athletic training cards. Your donation is greatly appreciated. Two, our business administration office has informed us that our yearly audit will begin on October 17th. The team has already begun uploading info into the audit portal. Thank you.
Thank you. Governance, Ms. DeKurian.
Hi, good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Thursday, October 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatori, Mr. Clipfel, Ms. Simons, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. As is typical throughout the school year, you will see a number of agenda items dealing with leave requests, appointments, resignations of teachers and other staff. This includes paraprofessionals, teachers, clerks, coaches, passport to learning, teachers and co-curricular advisors at all K through 12 schools, as well as substitutes. I want to specifically acknowledge Ms. Santana, who is retiring from her position as clerk at the high school effective December of this year. We thank you for your service to the district and wish you a happy and healthy retirement. A few other items of note on the agenda. Dr. Johnson also spoke to a few of these. One is 9.7, the approval of the NJ CUSAC Self-Assessment Committee for the 2022-2023 school year. As required, you will see the approval of the Self-Assessment Committee. The composition of that committee is prescribed by New Jersey Department of Education to include teachers, administrators, NJEA reps, Board of Education representative, and parent representatives. So thank you to those who are participating in the self-assessment. This committee is responsible for evaluating completing the district's self-assessment related to CUSAC standards. Additionally, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, you'll see the approval of the threat assessment teams for the district and for each school for the 2022-2023 school year. This is in response to a recently passed law, A4075-S2765, which requires public schools to develop threat assessment teams. As usual, there are agenda items for the approval of an array of valuable field trips and workshops. And then lastly, thanks to the new volunteers for the theater department that are on the agenda for approval tonight. Parent volunteers are so important to the theater program, and we appreciate you giving your time as volunteers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And wellness, Ms. Delara.
Sure. The Wellness Committee met on October 6th virtually. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simons, and myself. Diversity Fund, a backpacking-like grant which will go towards Bridge to Adventure trips, which will go towards transportation for all trips. The Bridge to Adventure Program, signups have been, are live. That email was sent out to all district's families by Mr. Delafabe. We are still waiting on a few wellness grants that should be coming in within the next weeks. Friday Nights in the Nest started last Friday. And Baseball and the Softball Clinic, which will take place on October 15th from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at JFK Stadium. We have 45 kids enrolled so far. As Dr. Johnson noted, we have the Threat Assessment Team, which is on the agenda for tonight for approval. We also have flu and COVID boosters that are set for October 14th, and on the 19th of November, we will have CPR training for all staff and coaches. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a report tonight, but I just wanted to say, as you can see, we're all wearing the Hoboken High School pink t-shirts tonight in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we are honored to be wearing them this evening. Next, we will move to public comments on agenda items.
Pat Waiters.
I just want to remind speakers of the board policy, please state your name, municipality of residence, and you'll have five minutes.
You can hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Patricia Waiters. And I'm up here tonight as Patricia Waiters, just a constituent in town, and I want to share also as an employee tonight, I'm speaking on, because the pages is like cut off, so it's the very next page over, which would be recognition for number two, like when they do the honorees for the students. I'm, I'm doing an honorary, I want him to be recognized tonight. Mr. Sorafin, I have to share this with you. When he was giving the speech, talking about the person that he recognized, unfortunately, they wasn't here to receive their award. He needed to be rewarded. I have to share this. Being in the district so long, having six kids of my own, well, three of them was my nieces and nephews, anyway, in the district for so many years. What Mr. Sorafin did on Friday gave me goosebumps. And if any other principal or teacher in this district performed the way he did, this is what I'm trying to say. People quick to go look at our district and put negative stuff and on our, on our websites and stuff, but I never worked days. I happened to come in because I had a doctor's appointment on Friday in the daytime. He reminded me of the movie Lean on Me, and I'm serious. He spoke so well. He changed the students' mindset from the time they got off the line into their classroom, and all I heard was James Brown record, "I Feel Good." And when I heard James Brown say, "Ah," it scared me because I jumped. And it said, "I feel good." He said, "It's Feel Good Friday." He spoke to the students as if they was his own, gave them the positive reinforcement to start the day. Unbelievable. I asked him to stay tonight because he didn't even know. I came out of nowhere, didn't I, Mr. Sorafin? And I said, "What did you do?" He said, "What did I do?" I said, "What did you do? Look at me. I have goosebumps." The same way people come in and complain, I told him, "I'm going to get the word out," and this is for every parent watching this, and they know I'll knock on their door. Give credit when the credit is due. We only one month into the school year, and this man came out ready. When I say ready in a positive note, willing to work with the parents, parents, please work with this principal. The middle school could be a little tough, but what I seen Friday, if Mr. Sorafin keep that up, they don't have a worry in the world. Trust me. And I'm there with you, Mr. Sorafin. I got your back. Excellent. He really need to be recognized. From honoring the students, whoever was the student of the day, he shared their experience with another student, helped another student. If there was a fight, he diffuse it. Everything excellent. Excellent. And I just want him to be recognized tonight by this board. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Angley, no others? No others? Okay. Then we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay. Can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Clipfel?
Yes.
Ms. DeKurian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now, public comments on both agenda and non-agenda items.
Ms. Waiters, would you like to speak again?
Yeah, I'm pleased to be here.
Okay. Mr. Manuel Rivera Solera?
Manuel Rivera Solera, five twenty-nine Park Avenue. Buenas noches a todos y a todas. Buonasera a tutti. Good evening, all. I'm standing tonight. I just want to, before I go on to my full comment, I just want to make sure, on November eighth, Election Day, will you continue to have that meeting that day? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I would like to speak on something. I know that it's a little trivial, but in regards to everything that was on this agenda, but the county is going to be...this is too low, I'm sorry. The county is going to be planting some trees around the county roads, and they put a tree in front of Collabro School, which is where I live in front of. I don't know if you have already agreed to that tree or not, because that tree is going to cause trouble there. I believe, in my opinion being living there almost my entire life, thirty-seven years, and it's the one that's on the side causes trouble, because there's a little bench, people sit there directly across the street from it. I was at the shade tree commission this evening, trying to speak on that tree, because I follow all the things, these are the trees, and all things in Hoboken, but they said that some of the trees, if you request not to be there, they will not put them there. So if you could avail yourself of that, if you haven't done it already, because like I said, another tree there will cause trouble because of the parking for the children to be let out. People come by there like crazy. The people who work there from the board know that there's no parking anywhere, and there's a tree there already that is not...how could I say that? It's a tree that no one takes care of. The tree is there by the grace of God, obviously, because God is the one that's taking care of it when it rains. I volunteered to water the tree, but I haven't been able to because it's been raining, and it's been fine. But I just also wanted to let you know that if you see me crossing the street with bottles of water, don't think I'm crazy. By the way, you can do that in Hoboken, so if you have a tree in front of your house, you can water it if you see that it's not getting watered. So that was my concern. So then I could feel free to go and speak about this tree in the county meeting and let them know, obviously, that you do not want this tree in front of that school. Even if you do, I'm still going to say no. But anyway, that was my reason for standing up tonight and to wish everyone a happy Italian-American Heritage Month and happy Hispanic Heritage Month. How those two are combined, I do not know, but they seem to work, as they did when I grew up in Hoboken. Thank you so much, and good evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Susan Deris?
Hi. My name is Susan Deris, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to take this moment to kindly request...
Please just state your municipality of residence.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. You just have to state your name and municipality of residence.
To the municipality?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to kindly request an increased vigilance of SRO and police presence at our schools during this election season. I, as a mother, was bullied and intimidated by Mr. Pavel Sokolov, a Board of Ed candidate, in front of my child and in front of other parents, and I feel that this is unacceptable in our community and for our children. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Norwood?
I just want to take the time to put into the record for people who aren't able to be here today, that if you haven't taken a chance to read Dr. Johnson's Seymour Public Notice on September eighteen, it's got some really excellent information in there. I really wanted to congratulate everyone in the district, the teachers and the students alike, for the accomplishments that are listed in there. To have the AP scores go from three or higher, from four point five percent to fifty-nine percent in just a matter of a few years is an amazing accomplishment. And to see the district lean into that further and release the Albert Platform to make sure that the students can even achieve greater success is...continues to be impressive. Of course, what would I do without saying something about the Orton-Gillingham Training? I appreciate that's continuing. And the Reading Fast Forward program is an amazing tool, again, not just for dyslexic students, but for all students. You know, I'll also point out that in your Seymour, there was a love STEM education, that the Hoboken Public Schools had the most elementary schools in New Jersey to make it to the New Jersey Steam Tank Regionals and statewide competitions, and Hoboken Middle School won the New Jersey Middle School statewide steam tank championship. So those are just two of the amazing accomplishments that the teachers, administration, and students have accomplished, and I just wanted to congratulate everyone involved with all of that. I also wanted to applaud the district in terms of implementing Rachel's Challenge. I did just achieve the Gun Sense Candidate Distinction. I'm running for Board of Education. Made an effort to learn more about how BOE members can advocate for policies to prevent gun violence in schools. And I was also part of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation's fundraising and donation to support the Rachel's Challenge social and emotional learning to increase interconnectedness and kindness and to reduce gun violence upon others and self-inflicted. I think that's very important in our community today. I know we can't come up here without having a little bit of constructive criticism. I think the attachments are still not coming through on the website, so like the financials and a lot of the attachments, they show like a section symbol, and they're not coming through. And I've tried PC, I've tried Mac, I've tried a couple of different platforms. So I think that'd just be helpful to communicate to the community so we could see the attachments which you clearly intend to put up there. So that would be helpful. And again, if there's a way that we can livestream this so that the whole community can hear all the good work that the BOE, the students and the teachers are doing, I think that would be really a positive thing for the BOE as well, for everyone to have that communication and transparency and community involvement. So one last thing is, I've been to almost all of these community roundtables about the facility's needs and the district. And from what I've heard is that the district is continuing to reach out to the community. Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson, for running those roundtables. I've seen a variety of people there. There seems to be a lot of misunderstanding and kind of misinformation being put out by some people. I've got some friends who just got a text from others who are running for Board of Education, that they're alleging the board is going to put forth next year a four-hundred-plus million-dollar bond referendum, or is going to put through a bond referendum they know is going to fail so that they can just shove it through the state. And that, to me, from listening to all the presentations, are clear falsehoods. It's disappointing to spread false information to people, particularly during an election season, and I guess I just wanted to get that into a record. So thank you very much for all of your efforts. I know it takes a lot of time to do what you do, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Angley, that's the last.
That's the last one? Okay. Well, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.